Fifteen Public Works, it is six forty-five P M., March twenty-first, first, two thousand and twenty-two. Nine items on the agenda, so we have about five minutes per item. First one is the approval of joint powers agreement for the Lakes Area Drug Investigative Division and authorizing signatures, and we're gonna start off with Chief Bestel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Current Lakes Area Drug Investigative Division, J P A, was approved in, in two thousand and twelve involving the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office, Baxter Police Department and the Brainerd Police Department. We needed to review that and revisit it with some additions and updated the, the J P A. Forlaid is specifically involving insurance, um, coverage for all entities as it relates to be an active participant in a drug unit. So that was one thing that was addressed and that was agreed upon with all parties. And to also clearly define some of the board's duties and responsibilities and, and the update has been looked at and reviewed by our city attorney as well. And I think the Baxter Police Department just approved their portion and will be moving forward, waiting for the Crow Wing County to approve theirs. I don't know if it's on the agenda for tomorrow or not, but just get it updated. And so the request would be the request the city council passed a resolution approving the J P A with the entities involved as outlined in the agreement for the Lakes Area Drug Investigative Division and authorize signatures.
Great. Guys have any questions, comments? No? Motion?
I have a motion. Uh, let me move down here. Oops, oh geez, just all closed up. Yeah, thank you. All right. Request the city council pass the, okay, move that we pass the resolution approving the joint powers agreement with the entities involved as is outlined in the attached agreement for the Lakes Area Drug Investigative, Investigative, eh, Division and authorize signatures on the documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? None, go to a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, second item is the two thousand and twenty-two Bridge Inspection Request for Proposals. Go ahead, Paul Sandy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in front of you tonight is a request for, for proposals for our bi-annual bridge inspections. Our two bridges, uh, being Laurel Street and College Drive, have to be inspected on a twenty-four month cycle. How that kind of works is we, uh, there's a, it's a manual called the BACIPUM, the Bridge Structure Information Program Manual, and it's published by MINDOT, but it follows federal standards on bridge inspections and, and bridge regulations. So, um, I'm the registered program administrator for the program, but there's, um, bridge classes that, um, have to do with bridge inspections that we don't have anyone certified in. So this is a, something we typically consult out. And it's, you know, uh, we usually get a pretty good price on this because we only have two bridges. And all the elements and everything are already broken down in MINDOT's SIMS, which is the Structure Information Management System. So everything's basically already done from the breakdown standpoint. They just have to go out and inspect and rate our bridge elements for us. So basically, the consultant would be in charge of, you know, um, looking at each of the elements, providing a score for those, uh, and putting them into the SIM system and then turning them over to me for final approval. That then gets shipped over to MINDOT and then further to F H W A to provide a sufficiency rating of the structure. So this is basically a, uh, inventory that's done statewide. All the county, cities, and MINDOT are responsible for their own bridges. And so we, uh, bi-annually consult this out. Uh, the services have been between thirty-five hundred and five thousand in years past. The last time we did this, we did switch our consultants. Uh, we did have Wid Seth do this for quite some time. To have another set of eyes on it, we actually hired Bolton to make the last time we did this to get a second set of eyes on our breakdowns, our scoring, and our, our final sufficiency rating. So, uh, staff would recommend just approving the attached request for proposals for the Bridge Safety Inspection Services proposal due date of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, in which we would bring that back to council on the first week of May.
Perfect. Uh, last time we did it, were the bridges perfectly fine?
Yes. Yeah, we have, uh, our, our bridges are in very good condition.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to recommend approval of the attached R F P request for proposal for Bridge Safety Inspection Services. Uh, the proposal due date of April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Number three, we have a construction cost share agreement for pavement marking with Crow Wing County. Mr. Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project actually came up last year. So this is a bi-annual project that we typically do, and we usually jump on with Crow Wing County's contract. They have, um, countywide striping that they do. And we tend, we tend to get better bid costs when we join on with a larger contract because they have the quantity. When we join on those, we tend to get a better price. The reason we're asking to do it this year is, uh, we seal coated, um, Oak Street last year. And Oak Street has a large majority of our city striping. Um, the other one is College Drive. So College and, and Oak Street have, I think, probably eighty percent of our citywide striping um, on those two streets alone. And since we seal coated it, usually the first year after a seal coat, the pavement markings disappear very quickly. And so if you drive on Oak Street right now, you'll notice that there isn't much left of our striping from last year. Um, that's just due to the seal coat and that top aggregate later kind of wearing off. And so we're asking to do this, this year again, and then we would wait next year to do it until two thousand and twenty-four again. So we're kind of getting off the cycle we have been on. We're just bumping this up a year so that we can re-stripe at least Oak Street. You'll see at the next council meeting, we'll be looking at our, um, awards for, uh, College Drive, the seal coat on College Drive. They came in substantially over our estimates based on material costs being very, very high right now. And so we're not quite sure if we're gonna recommend awarding that this year. We might skip a year of seal coating just because, um, the contracts came in, um, upwards of seventy-five percent higher than they were last year. So, um, we might, uh, tack College Drive. I think the College Drive striping is probably still good yet, but we gotta look at it before we make that recommendation. So, um, we would just be, you know, seal or striping everything but College Drive this next year. If we do seal coat it next year, we don't want to waste the funds to go and stripe it and then seal coat over the top of it next year. So, um, that's what we're asking for is to join on to Crow Wing County's contract this year, and then, uh, next year we'll take that year off and then do it again in two thousand and twenty-four. So our cost for that, for this contract with Crow Wing County with their three percent administrative fee is twenty-four thou- estimated to be twenty-four thousand eight eleven ten. Uh, we budget fifteen thousand dollars annually, um, in our five-year street and sewer capital plan, which gives us thirty thousand bi-annually for this project.
Okay. Yeah, that was my concern was, was that if we were gonna seal coat on, uh, College Drive or not this year. So, thank you for explaining that. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Got a motion?
Go ahead.
Uh, move to approve the attached cost share agreement with Crow Wing County for roadway pavement markings.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Moving on to the number four, contract towing specifications and authorizing bidding of services. And this is again, Mr. Sandy?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, this is a bi-annual contract that we have with towing vendors, um, in or near the city of Brainerd. So this contract is up on May fifteenth. So we wanted to get this in front of you guys. Uh, we met with, uh, engineering staff, met with the police department here recently and went over our towing specifications. And we did add a couple of things or clarified a couple of things. So the specifications are basically the same as we let last time. It goes over insurance, it goes over how we'll pay, um, or how they, they will be paid for the towing services. It goes over what kind of towing services we're asking for, that snow removal, that's disabled vehicles, uh, street sweeping. So it's a contracted service that the contractor is basically, um, you know, uh, bound to, to charge the people that have impounded cars or, um, you know, cars that are towed from their location. Couple of things that we changed or added are on the last page of the specifications, which is, uh, oh, it would be page eighty in your packet. Eighty of four fifty-nine. The first one, the notice of taking and sale, section fifteen. We wanted, so state statute one sixty-eight B point zero-six, um, basically, uh, says that the police department or the, uh, the vendor has to give a notice of taking and sale within five days of that car being towed and impounded. We wanted to put the onus of that on the vendor. Um, the police department didn't want really anything to do with that. You know, the vendor has the vehicle, they're the, they have the impound lot, they're the ones that are taking it. So we wanted to make it very clear that, um, they are supposed to be sending that letter out. They've been doing it anyways, we just wanted to make sure it was at least in writing. Uh, another change that we did was the estimate of costs in section sixteen. Um, this, uh, wording came up when we have some instances where we'll be downtown, um, towing vehicles at three in the morning, and the tow, the vendor will have a car up on the hook of, uh, their vehicle. The registered owner would come down and ask, hey, um, how much is it to drop my vehicle? Or how much, it was an estimate of my cost if they, if I have to go pick it up from impound. They wouldn't know that answer. So the, the registered owner really couldn't make a educated decision on whether to pay the drop fee or wait for it to be impounded and go pick it up, right? And so we want that vendor to be on the hook for, you know, at least knowing what the contract is, knowing the cost, and give them a reasonable estimate of what it'll be to go and pick up their car. At least then they can make an educated decision at that time, whether to pay the fifty-dollar drop fee or whatever it is, or go pick it up. So that was something we put in there. Couple of the other changes. Uh, we added, um, a couple other fees that, um, towing companies tend to charge. Uh, in the miscellaneous cost section, we added the no keys fee and the drop fee. Those were not in the specifications last time we bid this out. Uh, we wanted to make sure that that was in there so that it's very clear what, um, uh, uh, registered owner would be, uh, charged in that instance. And the other thing that we changed or, or made more clear is crash-related cleanup. It says per thirty minutes, but we also put that, that's a five-minute minimum. There was times where they would, uh, pick up a bumper, throw it in the back of their truck, and then charge the full thirty-minute crash-related cleanup. And really, they didn't do anything. And so we wanted to make sure that they're at least performing some sort of sweeping, crash-related cleanup that takes at least five minutes so that, um, they don't charge the whole thirty minutes if they're picking up a hubcap or a bumper. So, um, those are the major changes. I guess we'll take questions, otherwise we're looking for approval to put this out, uh, for bids and, uh, bring those back, I believe, on April twenty-second again. Uh, it's just, uh, I think it's in the notice of proposals. Yeah, April twenty-second, ten A M., so we'd bring that back on the first meeting in May also.
So, Mr. Sandy or Chief Bestel, uh, all, all these changes, it seems like we've had an issue with in the past year or two. Is that different than previous vendors?
No, I wouldn't say it's different. You know, there's gonna be things that come up that we can always make modifications to our, um, specifications to help us out on the administrative end, you know? Mike gets appeals in his office and it makes it easier for them to look at the bid documents and say, okay, making sure the fees line up, right? Sometimes the no fees key would pop up and, um, you know, that wouldn't be an item that is on our specifications, but, um, not, now it will be. And the other things, you know, like the, it happened because of, um, you know, we would just be towing a vehicle. And I don't know if it's happened before with previous vendors, but the, um, uh, the estimated cost thing, I think it's just a nice service for our downtown. And then even to have the officers have that, uh, proposal with them so that they know.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, just bounce on that is that it's always like this, uh, contract was out there and was approved by council and our, our officers didn't necessarily have that. So we're gonna make a lot of it's, um, concept of this approval. Put it in each collector's what they have. So we'll be, we'll transfer it when our, with our toes. And more importantly, they know right on the gate, um, you know, what should be charged when they, when they get out there. We can be able to, you know, if it's a timely matter, that's the bonus to it. Some of you get the three hundred dollar bill and, right, this is crazy.
Great. So really just cleaning up some communication. Good.
All right, Mr. Chair, ready for the motion? The move to recommend approval of the attached specifications and authorized bidding for these services as presented. Proposals due April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two at ten A M.
Second. Motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Uh, next item, number five, is the plans and specifications and the authorization of bidding East River Road improvements with the Mississippi Landing Trailhead Project. Go ahead, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the council, I believe back, uh, before the Trailhead Project had originally started, the Riverfront Committee requested that the city, um, take on the right-of-way portion of the Mississippi Landing Trailhead Project and some of the parking and street modifications that they were asking for by the Trailhead Park. Um, you can see a layout of that configuration is in your packet, uh, if you're interested. So you can see there's gonna be diagonal parking, uh, curb extensions for pedestrian walkways. And then, um, you know, there's a few parallel parking spots, and then the reconfiguration, the trail. There'll be a little bit of, uh, storm sewer adjustments and things that happen with that too, with the change in parking and the curb lines. So with this project, um, it would be bid as part of the package with the Mississippi Landing Trailhead Project. So, um, that was, uh, going out to bids here, I believe, today or tomorrow. And so we just wanted to make sure that, uh, you guys were aware of what the, uh, plans and specs and the estimated costs were. Uh, three hundred twenty-six thousand, three hu- three forty-eight forty. Uh, that includes a ten percent contingency, um, for that work. So we're looking just for authorization to advertise this project along with the Mississippi Landing Trailhead. Um, this will be paid out of the construction fund. It is part of our five-year street and sewer capital plan.
Uh, just remind me, when was this decided that it was going to be, uh, streets project and not parks?
I think it was two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen, okay.
Have to go back in the minutes, but I think I've pulled it up before.
Okay. And I'm seeing the, the layout, we're not going any further up the hill with, with this project or down?
Nope, nope, it's basically right in front of the park there. They're at the, they had to extend the tie on, tie-ins a little bit so that makes sure it matches the, um, roadway grade coming in and out of it. But it's mainly just in front of the park there, and the tie-ins extend a little further out to make sure that the grades match in.
All right.
Got a motion? Move to approve, uh, plans, specifications as presented and authorized bidding the East River Road improvements concurrently with the M L T Park Project.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Number six, plans and spec- specifications and authorized bidding for two thousand and twenty-two sanitary sewer collection system repairs. This is another fun one for Paul.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we also do have Scott Hedland here with S E H, uh, if there's any, uh, more technical questions about this project. But so these, um, uh, projects all kind of started when we started doing our sanitary sewer investigations back, I believe it was, uh, in two thousand and twenty, right at the beginning of COVID, we started this process uh, where we were, uh, smoke testing a large portion of our system and, um, kind of verifying. We did a report back in the two thousands, uh, for smoke testing of the city. And, um, we wanted to go back and look at a few areas that we had rehabbed previously, and then also look at, uh, deficiencies in our system again. So this project, uh, came out as the highest priority, um, from our smoke testing investigation. Um, there's, uh, very leaky manholes and there's, uh, the, basically the trunk line that runs over in Rotary Park across the, uh, trail dike and, um, goes up into South Brainerd. That is the portion we are looking at here. I think Sean probably has a map of it. He can show you right there. So the main lift station being at the top of the page. And then, uh, it cuts across to the south and then goes across the trail, um, and then follows the trail up to its terminus right there, where it kind of tees off. So it's kind of a zigzag shape there. So we're looking at, uh, rehabbing the manholes, um, and lining this pipe in this area. So with this, there's also a secondary project that we're currently designing and looking at. And that's the segment of the main interceptor pipe that runs basically from that same location on the north end of your drawing there and runs up East River Road to College Drive. That's the other, um, project that we are currently designing and looking at, um, options for that one. So just talking about this project itself, we've, we've budgeted four hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, that number was basically determined from our, our sewer age, um, calculations that we have and trying to basically replace or rehab everything that's nineteen forty and older in a twenty-year lifespan. That's how the original four hundred thousand dollar number was calculated. Um, so we've been budgeting for that for many years, but we haven't really had a project or we, we didn't want to start rehabbing pipes until we did some investigation, both smoke testing and flow monitoring, which we're currently doing the flow monitoring study right now. We didn't want to do any of this rehab until we knew where the highest priority areas were so we could put our money in the, in the best locations possible. So this one from the smoke testing came up as the, the section most in need. Um, concurrently with this project, Connie and I will be working, uh, we'll be bringing proposals forward for a rate study in two thousand and twenty-two to look at our sanitary sewer and our storm sewer collection rates to make sure there's enough money in those funds to fund capital improvement projects like this moving forward. I think the last one that was done was in two thousand and nineteen, or last time we had a rate adjustment was in two thousand and nineteen. So we're still playing catch-up in that sanitary sewer fund, but this project has been in our five-year capital plan for many years without actually a project getting done. And so this four hundred thousand dollars, um, was in there for many years, and this project estimate is coming in at five fifty-seven, four seventy-five. Um, so we're looking to authorize, um, us to put this out to bid with S E H and receive bids and hopefully get to an award point here after a month or so for this work.
Okay. Specifically, what is it? Is it, is it the pipe completely broken? Is it leaking in random places or i- is it a design issue flaw? What?
Nope, so the pipe is just extremely old, you know? These, most of these interceptors, for example, the twenty-seven inch interceptor that runs on East River Road, that was put in in nineteen forty.
Right.
So you're looking at, you know, um, eighty years of wear and tear on a concrete pipe. The concrete pipe they used back in those days, they didn't have, right now you tie them together. Most of these were just, um, you know, bell, bell and spigot ends that you push together. It's, we call it highway pipe.
Yep.
Um, that, you know, you have sanitary sewer flowing through and the joints, you know? There's usually enough flow in these pipes to keep, um, you know, things from coming in a lot of times, but it's the pushing out we're worried about with the sanitary sewer. So, um, this, these types of projects basically seal joints, they seal the manholes up where we do see some leakage coming in from the outline groundwater. But a lot of these pipes run full enough to where you're not getting a lot of, of I N I, uh, in these segments just because the high flow conditions in these pipes. Yep, it's mainly the joints that are the issue. Yeah, you, you wouldn't want this to be completely broken because this takes all the sewage in Brainerd. It'd be a big issue.
So when we go to repair this or rehab it, we're not replacing it really, we're, we're just
It's a trenchless technology, yep. So they basically take a big sock and they invert it and then they steam cure it.
Is this gonna, um, shut down the trail for a time too?
No, it's usually pretty, um, it's not a very intense type of construction. They'll usually, uh, bypass the flow with, uh, they'll put a big plug in one end, and they'll pump from one end to the other. And then they'll line a segment, uh, from manhole to manhole. So they'll have a setup on one manhole and a setup on the, on the last manhole, and they'll line in between them.
Got it. Okay.
I'll move to recommend approving the attached plans and specifications and authorizing bidding.
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe the next item is the R F Ps for Harrison Elementary Oak Street Safe Routes for School Project. Take it away, Mr. Sandy.
Okay, so, uh, this project kind of started back when the city worked with Region Five on creating their Safe Routes to School Plan. We had a Safe Routes to School Plan starting back in two thousand and fourteen. We did a whole bunch of improvements around Garfield Elementary and basically exhausted the improvements within that plan. And so we kind of re-upped our plan with Region Five and got a new Safe Routes to School Plan. Uh, the city then applied for funding for an engineering study, uh, which we did with S R F Consulting and MINDOT in which looks at specific schools and improvements that could be done to improve, um, pedestrian safety or kids walking to school. Harrison and Lowell and Riverside were the three schools that the city selected for this study. The improvements that you see in front of you tonight were awarded funding, uh, through MINDOT Safe Routes to School Program in the amount of half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is a hundred percent construction funding. So a lot of times with Safe Routes to School, they're federal funds and they're an eighty-twenty funding split, which means eighty, eighty percent's funded through the grant and twenty percent is a local match. This funding is from MINDOT and it's a hundred percent, it can be a hundred percent used on construction, so there's no local match required. The only thing that we have to do is design and engineer these improvements, um, at our cost. We've typically consulted these types of projects out because it's out of the scope of what we do on a street, you know, resurfacing type program with our engineering staff. So we have one big project a year, one or two big projects a year, depending on the funding source, uh, that we deliver with our three engineering staff in-house. Being that this was a grant and this was over and above our street funding program, we typically do consult out these types of services. And that's what we're asking for approval on tonight is to, um, approve the attached request for proposals to be, uh, shipped out to consultants in the area, um, and get those returned to us by April twenty-ninth so we can, um, begin the project design, hopefully after the first meeting in May for this project. So we would be looking for survey, design engineering, final engineering, and construction engineering services for this project, um, as part of that Garfield Safe Routes to School work.
Okay. So I'm looking at this right now, and we already have a design. Are, are we paying more to get a design?
This is not a design, this is a layout. So that's, that, this comes right from the study. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into surveying, um, the area, uh, making construction documents, which is basically your cross-sections, your quantities, the stuff the contractor bids on. Um, and then the construction engineering side is where, you know, you send someone out to the field and they observe construction, make sure it meets the specifications, and, uh, make sure that the contractor's supplying quality materials and that kind of thing. So what you have in front of you came directly from the report. Um, that was an engineering study. And there's a lot of work that goes between the study phase and construction phase. That's what we're asking for.
Got it.
Chair question?
What?
Um, is the school aware of the project or the award? I know they were part of the planning process, um, but they're, they're aware of what's
Yeah, so, um, Reed Thiesy has been very, uh, in tune with this project. We actually filled out this grant application with him.
Jointly, okay.
Um, and then, uh, I shipped him over the award letter as soon as we found out that we were awarded the money.
Thanks.
Okay.
I have a motion if we're ready?
Go ahead.
Uh, move to approve the attached, uh, request for proposals for the Harrison Elementary Oak Street Safe Routes to School Project with a proposed proposal opening date of April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
And second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? This one passes. Next is a resolution, uh, due to, uh, with the detour agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the South Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. Go ahead, Mr. Sandy.
Okay, um, so this, uh, detour agreement that you have in front of you tonight is for the use of Willow Street for seventy days. So MINDOT, uh, does, uh, compensate the city for the roadway life used, uh, uh, per this agreement. So they have, if this agreement is signed, they have access to use Willow Street for that seventy days, and they would pay us two thousand four hundred eight dollars and eighty-four cents, um, for the use of that street. So the detour that is for this part of the project goes from that Joseph Street intersection down to Buffalo Hills Lane, and they'll be utilizing, um, Industrial Park Road, Thirteenth Street Southeast and Willow Street to get back to Highway three seventy-one B. Um, so our portion of that is obviously the Willow Street portion. Uh, MINDOT standard agreement language, uh, is attached here. It basically just allows them to use our road for seventy days and pay us a fee to do so. So if there's questions about that, I can answer them now, but otherwise we'd be looking for, uh, approval to execute the agreement and authorize the signatures on it.
I don't have a question, but, um, just a comment. I remember when we did the first half, there was all kinds of uproar because there was people driving on Seventh. I don't remember what the way around that was and how, how the city dealt with kind of thwarting that back. But if that were to happen again, I don't know, um, I think a lot of it fell on you guys, didn't it?
Yeah, initially it did, then the state parole came in.
Okay. Okay.
Put cars there.
Yeah, put cops there, okay. Um, but I, I mean, is that something that MINDOT would consider paying us some for as well? I mean, we got a twenty-four hundred dollar cup of coffee for street rental, basically.
Yeah, so this, this section of, of roadway is a little nicer because we have the frontage roads uh down on that south end that a lot of the business access already is. A lot of people were using Seventh to, you know, get to Willow Street or get to Oak Street um the easy way and it was very accessible. Um, with the frontage roads the way they are, you'll have to, to do the same thing that was happening during that project, they'd have to get on the frontage road, get back onto Sixth Street and then continue down Seventh and all that kind of stuff if, if they wanted to do that same thing. I, I'm gonna bring it up at the pre-construction meeting of the issues we had during the previous project. The State Patrol did end up, you know, coming out and utilizing their time and forces to patrol that to make sure that there wasn't that happening again. And so originally it was our local forces. We requested that the State Patrol and, and they come out and patrol that. And so if that does happen again, we can certainly ask for that same thing.
Got it.
Ready with a?
Yep, go ahead.
And I'll move to recommend adopting the attached resolution entering into the detour agreement with MINDOT and allowing proper signatures and amendments for the agreement, agreement.
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Go to a vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then our final item, consideration of bids and award of contract for the NP Center segment of the Kiuna Lakes State Trail Project. Go ahead, Mr. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um you, you'll see in your packet that because the bid opening was on Friday, I shipped this out later on that day. Um, so our bids did come in. Um, our apparent low bidder was Knife River. Um, just as a little history here, this is the segment of the trail. So there's three segments, if you'll recall. There's the west segment, which basically goes from the beginning of the Buffalo Hills Trail to the NP Center property. There's the NP Center segment, which is everything within that property limits. And then there's the east segment that um we're designing right now, but we have a bonding request into the legislature to finish that segment off. So we're talking about basically the middle segment here tonight. The bids were received. Um, our engineer's estimate for that work was, I don't think I have it on here. It was two hundred and twenty or three hundred twenty-eight thousand and some change. Um, our total bid costs did come in about fourteen to fifteen percent over. Um, which is, so the, the trail cost, which is a DNR eligible reimbursement expense, is a hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty cents. Um, the NP Road and Lot, which is a local cost uh that we signed the agreement with Mr. Higgins with, that cost is coming in at two hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total project cost of three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, we did a little bit of analysis to look at where the overages were. They're kind of spread out across the board and they're both pretty even. So when you look at the reimbursable costs and what our local costs in, they're both about fourteen to fifteen percent over. So there's not really a spot we can point to that the overage occurred. Um, I think it's kind of the volatility of the market right now. Gas prices are extremely high. That obviously kind of rolls down into what we see for construction pricing. Um, what we're here to kind of determine tonight is if we should award and move forward with this project uh tonight. We are recommending that we do that. Um, we don't know what the next year or so will, will be with gas prices or the way things are right now. Um, you know, like I said, we did open a seal coat project um the same day and it was about seventy-five percent over. Uh, you'll be looking at that the next meeting. We're not gonna recommend likely approving that one to move forward. I think we'll wait a year. But um, this one, you know, we're looking for approval to move forward with this one as we had this one planned. Uh, we have an agreement signed with Mr. Higgins and we want to move forward with the construction phase of this. Um, I don't know if Scott Headland is also here too, if there's specific questions about what they kind of saw with pricing, but I think it's kind of uh statewide right now from what we've been seeing.
Yeah, I think, I think it's all in the document here, but I know we saved a lot of money last year on being under budget, but I think I can see a, a new theme for this year. Um, some of it's uncontrollable. But uh, if we're gonna save a little money, are we saving as much money on, on withholding the seal coat project as we are going over budget on this?
Yeah, I mean, so we typically spend a hundred fifty thousand on seal coating a year. Well, for the same amount of work we did last year, our bid cost came in at two hundred sixty thousand. So kind of gives you an idea of the market volatility right now. Um, really, it's the oil. The emulsion costs for a seal coat were up basically a hundred percent from last year. Um, and so, you know, really the curb and gutter costs and the asphalt costs were a large majority of this. I think class five or the gravel cost was also up a lot. So those were kind of the three big items that we're seeing increases on.
Okay.
Anybody got a motion? Chair, move to approve the consideration, award of the NP Center segment for the Kiuna Lakes Trail, uh Lake State Trail Project.
Second.
Motion and second. Uh, any more discussion?
That's just the award to Knife River if we're gonna do that.
That is to award it.
Okay, award, okay, yeah. I'll change that to award it to Knife River.
Okay. And a second. Okay. Alright, um, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is all our items, so we will adjourn.